Thank you, Michael. Let's go ahead and convene the October 20th Public Works Subcommittee Meeting. Let the record reflect that complement of Paula, myself, Hector, David, and Kevin, I'll with us. That's okay, I've got the combination to the two of them. Approval of the minutes. Did you get a chance to look at those, the draft minutes of September 27?
I got a chance to review, but now I would be approved.
Okay. But the records reflect that the meeting minutes were approved. A public comment, anyone wishing to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda may do so. There's no one here in person. Michael, did we have anyone out there to address the city council?
Thank you, Chair. There are no members of the public attending the meeting online at this time.
Thank you. Well then, let's go ahead. Communications, anything?
No, no, no communications, Mayor.
Okay. How about new business then? Let's discuss a complaint that we received over an easement at Cherry Creek property.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Chair. There's a correspondence relative to this item including your packet. It includes my response. It was from Ms. Mary Ann Bram, who is a property owner and also the subject property that she owns is where the access easement is located. Please express concerns about the use of the easement by residents within the Tarman area and alluding to residents from Cherry Creek Village project and concerns about entering and exiting from Cherry Creek Village out the Tarman driveway. We have, staff has initiated a legal review with the easement. A memo pending from our city attorney will give him the concerns over potential litigation. We'll most likely be discussing it in a close session.
Mr. Chair, just a follow-up question. When do you anticipate that we'll have that number?
We just had a close, our conversation with the city attorney on Tuesday. And we've asked for the memo to be prepared, you know, as quickly as possible. I think the indication was before November 1st.
Yes, I thought she said by next week, but.
And will we discuss them in a closed session? Is that what?
That, I think that was the preliminary direction from our state attorney. If not, it may be followed with a communication council. I will point to a couple of things. One is we are, it's kind of covered in a separate item, but it relates to this. We will be, and are have requested a scope of work to evaluate improvements to the Boulevard adjacent to the project site to improve pedestrian safety and, you know, for residents of the city, of course, but also for residents that are leaving the Cherry Creek Village site. So they intend to be, to identify a set of proposed improvements that would alleviate the need or the desire to use the driveway access, which in the conditions of approval was required to be provided at a minimum for emergency vehicle access. So I don't think that there's any intent to eliminate that, to do the requirement of the fire district to have their access even the units, but to reduce the use of that easement through providing other improvements that support safe pedestrian use.
One closed session.
Well, I think.
As he talks about like the potential, does it rely on the vehicle? What we discussed, the email we received indicates that we would be liable, so it's very.
And Mary Ann's.
Yeah.
Yeah, she, in her correspondence, she, Mrs. Mary Ann's brings email. She says she's putting the city on notice. And it's bringing concerns about, you know, use the language used here in children that might be killed. So we want to make sure we address the potential liability concern.
Just a couple of quick comments here, I mean, Chair. First of all, thank you. I really want to see us give that legal review. That's critical thing. I do want the legal review to be very clear on whether or not the city does have as the property owners who the housing authority has a legal right to change the recorded easement to restrict the use. That's the, I think that's the question that's out there. We've heard mixed answers to that question that since it's a recorded easement, we don't have the ability to change it. But then again, as a property owner that's leasing the property, so I really want that question clearly answered. And so we can understand and make more decisions after that, so.
And if it's not closed session, I do anticipate that you will see possibly published communication from the city attorney. But I think the important takeaway is that we will, and we're bringing forward a scope of work for some design work to, you know, again, address, I think, some of the concerns that Cherry Creek Village had expressed that kind of generated the interest in using this driveway for access. You know, we can do what we can to try to reduce the need for that with other improvements. To kind of solve the issue and also to help with some of the intractability concerns on Boulevard.
All right. Michael, is there anybody out there in virtual world that has a question? I don't really see anyone.
Yeah, there's no members of the public attending the meeting at this time.
And there's no one here at City Hall. So if there's nothing else, let's move on to an update on public health and safety concerns surrounding the blighted Palm Wash property. And Kevin, is that yours?
Well, sure, I can, we did have a hearing with our hearing officer regarding this with our code enforcement officer, Robert Smith. He laid out all the violations, seeking, I think, 12 violations in total. Could amount to as high as $25,000 if the code officer agrees with all of the complaints and all the separate sightings. So they got, the officer has, what did he say, 30 days, 30 days to make the decision. And that was about 15 days ago. Before last. So we did take that action, posted it out there. We took the code enforcement officer, not officer, but the hearing officer out to the site. He went out and looked at it himself. We did our best and we followed the rules in terms of informing Mr. Anawon that the hearing was occurring. He did not show up. So we're waiting to hear the judgment that we were informed by Robert Smith that we can not just leave the property, but have a personal judgment against Mr. Anawon so that we can go after any of his assets. You know, I don't know why he motivates this guy. It doesn't seem like it, but it's, it is something that occurred. And it's, was pretty positive, I thought.
Well, I think the, the the method that we pursue with respect to code enforcement was a direct result of the action to update the ordinance, which results in notice of violation generating fines, which then can, in most cases, it's going to motivate the violation to be rectified. And if not, those fines do become subject to personal judgment and ultimately can be recorded as linked against all of the property owners requisite assets. So we see it as this kind of we can continue this process if, through future violations, if, you know, brought into compliance, or alternatively, we can pursue, pursue cleaning up ourselves and, and, you know, continue to increase the fines for the violation. But there are significant, we recognize that. I'm glad that the code, the hearing officer was able to see it directly. And I really believe that he's going to rule in our favor. Given the significance of the issues and the questions that were asked.
Yeah, once we get that rule, then we can reach Robert Smith, just couple of, we can name that property directly. Or we can, like I said, it's a personal judgment against Mr. Anawon, there's other ways to get the money. I don't know if the money is our big motivator here, more so just to get it cleaned up, but we are, you know, taking the steps that we can with our code enforcement officer.
Joe, any questions?
Well, just a couple of comments. First of all, I think money should be an issue because of the fact we're spending a lot of our staff time on it. And I think we should recoup that time because it really is a blighted area. Number one. Number two is, my biggest concern is safety. I'm really concerned about open trenches in there with this. And so it's more of one, it's taken way too long. And I know we're all through the legal process, but I really don't want somebody to get hurt. We got the boys and girls help directly behind that. And today, driving by it again, there's just a lot of debris and a lot of garbage on the ground as well as a vehicle that's smashed, rered, parked on there. So again, blighted, it's also public safety and a public nuisance as far as I can see. And I think we should go after every legal avenue that we have to recoup all the costs that we're spending on this because it should have never been left to get to this condition and require all this time we're spending on it as a city.
During the hearing, you did ask for to recover the costs associated with Robert Smith and staff times.
Yeah, that's including and the cleanup time because I think that's the next step. I don't foresee knowing this history and cleaning this. So I think we need to start thinking about that next step. Because, and David, I would ask if possible, if you could add this interview for just that we are working on this. It is a big community concern. And I think people should be made aware that we are taking this serious and that are legal to address it. So people are aware that it's not just a blighted area that we're in.
And, you know, I'd really be curious, I'm not sure whether we can, but I'd really be interested in who paid property taxes. You know, if they were paid by him or by someone else. But I mean, I just don't know why somebody would let them get to the point of being delinquent with penalties and late fees if you have the way up for all to pay them right up front. So that's kind of always been a question of mine, how people will do that. And then at the last minute, they come running in with a check, so.
We can certainly ask. Yeah, I don't know, we're privy to that information, but.
Yeah, it's probably appropriate enough. Yeah, keep up the good work. And, you know, I know it's a difficult one because of, you know, it was being run half-assed to begin with. And half the machines were worked, then you go out and fix them a little bit. You know, so it was always a challenge to get the attention, so.
I'll follow Robert Smith about how we can, you know, get in there and clean up what we did on Park, you know, especially take from that.
Then we'll capture every nickel that we're spending and recoup that, plus any fines that we do.
Yeah. Well, I see no hands in the attendees online and I see no hands in the, in City Hall. So why don't we, if there's nothing else, move on to the update on signage.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Chair. I know our park superintendent, Victor Galan, has been working on signage. One for our grand opening ceremony on Saturday, but also for Cherry Creek as well as other signage. And if you want to maybe cover, give an update on Portfield City Park in Milton.
Thank you, Dave. Yeah, so we have, we're in order, but we went through every city park and evaluated the signage to be replaced. And the signs have been ordered. For the Portfield, we just received it today for the park, the open space. Really nice sign. And we also received the ones for the pedal horse, the permanent pedal horse, for those that were installed already. I talked to, through the signs this morning, and they mentioned that the rest of the sign should be ready early next week. Hopefully, we get them in the middle of the week or so, we can start installing some of those, some of the signs. This is, this is what one of the signs is going to be, it was going to look like, I wanted, especially for the city park. We wanted to make sure that the community knows how important it is to keep our parks clean. And this one is, please don't litter in the park, clean up after your events, help keep your community clean. And then we also want to hit and translate it in Spanish. And you have the parse number here to the policy. If you need any additional. They have the additional questions. So that's going to be the general signs in all, in every city park. And then these other parts, it's like, we want to see where we updated a few of the, like, those. No overnight camp in the park and stuff like that. So these are, these are.
The park rules.
Yeah.
The assignment developed for Portfield, it's not a park rule sign, it's more of a decorative name.
Yeah.
Pretty nice looking. They would do wood, Hector?
No, so it's, I wanted to, we wanted to get a durable metal sign. It's, it's a nice brown color with a nice background. And roughly about 48 inches by 48 inches. So it's, I think it says, "One for Portfield, open space reserve." With the city in them.
It looks very, it looks very natural. I think if I sent it to the picture, you could have put it.
Yeah.
You couldn't tell it was 40, four by four.
That's big. And then we wanted to make sure to do more products, which is very durable. And so, yeah, I'm hoping that within the next week or so, we should have all the signage that are in the park.
Now, what about the ones at Second Street Park at Aurora Rusty?
Those are.
Are those kind of days?
Yes, they are.
Because I think some of those, and, excuse me, I didn't read every line here, but it's, those were, it wasn't known.
Yeah.
Well, these are.
Yeah, they'll have, this one, they'll include that, the, no, dummy, you have code, but they have the ones that. And this is, yeah, this is going to be the one for the city park.
Yeah.
This will be here.
Very nice.
Just wanted to refer to that, yes.
Well, hopefully it will help.
Are those ordered already?
No, they haven't been, well, they're ordered, but it's going to take roughly about a week or a half. I wanted to show, try to, what have you guys heard?
Will it be helpful, but, you know, no, nobody, I don't know the word back, nobody allowed, parks, the parks, when, parks are closed. You got the hours, but. Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
I'm just thinking, where it's really clear that, you know, I can say I could camp, you know, overnight camp, but I'm not camping overnight, just touting, just have to get here three or more, you know, that kind of thing. No, no trespass between the hours of 10:30 and 7:00, or something like that. That means it's not allowed.
Yeah.
That I've seen now.
I can look up the, to make the sound.
Yeah, basically, so it's real clear, you're not allowed on the park between this hour and this.
The human sense is very good about changing. It's all done digital and so.
I just mean that. And you have. Yeah, it's really helpful because then, I don't know, there's no confusion when the police go because it's going to be a lot of parks, say, parks closed. Well, yeah, but I'm just, no trespassing between these hours and these hours.
I can, right after the meeting, I gave a call and made sure that they had. I phoned the holdoff on these three until I talked with it. I wondered if one of you guys.
Let's, you know, suggest.
And I think the language we used was dawn to dusk to give that flexibility so that, you know, in summer months, it's much lighter later, first kind of a strip time range. And then, and then, new chair, Chief Person, because he enforced curfew of the Portfield. As well, particularly for our family and in the parks after.
After. Yeah, I know, I think we have that much of a problem with that. It's a city park as much as over by the river, would you think?
It's been pretty good, the person. Because this is, this is one that's going to be the general sign, only through the code. You can cover that. This is a beautiful example.
This one's going to be, this is one that's going to be the general sign, only through the code. You can cover that. This is going to be the favorite sample.
Good. Excellent. Thank you. So I see no public hands again. So if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next item, which is a discussion about removal and disposal of portable basketball hoops. And I had asked for this one to, to be put on the, on the agenda to at least kick around. You know, the address to some of these neighborhoods, and I can tell you, in my neighborhood, about six or seven houses down, a family moved in about a year ago and they had one of those basketball hoops that you can tell they brought from their other residents. The kids used to play basketball, maybe for four or five days, and then they went off to college and it's never been used. And it still sits in the street. And while that in itself is, is not permissible, I just thought, is it possible that we could get our waste provider to do a basketball hoop roundup? Anybody that wants to get rid of their basketball hoops, you just call a number and we're going to do it on Saturday, the 23rd, whatever day is picked by them, and they'll come around and pick up all the basketball hoops. Now, I understand, you know, there's probably a little hair on it. We're going to want them to send us a note, to sign something because we don't want neighbors calling in on, on their neighbors to get rid of basketball hoops. And next thing you know, we're buying basketball hoops. So I don't know, what are your thoughts on that?
Which, which are, I think there's a couple, a couple of options for, for consideration. We, as you know, we have our existing code enforcement nuisance debate provisions in our code. I'm not sure it's spelled out specifically basketball courts in the, in the hoops in the public right of way, but we could, that would be an avenue to pursue as far as to officially declare hoops in both right of way a public nuisance. So that this is clear, we can, we could then disseminate that information to, you know, try to make the community aware that these, these are, you know, from our perspective, do represent a nuisance because they generate safety concerns of being in the right of way, but also, you know, can be a safety as well. So that's kind of, it's one avenue for us to kind of do it formally through either, either an ordinance or a resolution just to make that statement publicized and try to get the community, you know, through kind of a public education campaign and ramping up this appropriate authority by a resolution of code. And, but, but to your point, you know, we, we do now, or, you know, they used to do kind of the one-day community cleanup through Recology. Now it's more of an on-demand service. That was a change that we, we made. I think what Recology expressed was they're getting a lot more calls and people don't want to wait to that one day a year. So it's a year around. And I don't know, where residents want to be able to, you know, just guard materials. And so you know, we can, we can certainly ask them to highlight that in their newsletter or, you know, the materials that they provide because we're about, they're getting ready to be called the items. And so, you know, if residents have, they're no longer using these items and they're just thinking about how can they, you know, they don't want to pay, it's currently done, they subscribe to services, they can just call Recology.
So if I call Recology tomorrow and said, I have a basketball hoop we don't use anymore, can you come get it? I'm sure there's going to be a fee involved.
I, I'll, I'll check on the fee, but they're supposed to provide every resident, you know, these one-day services. You know, what, what exactly the parameters are. Because, for instance, I know they, they had certain restrictions when they had the bulky pickup day, you know, I think like Maxis for example, which was well-used in the neighborhood. I don't know if, what their view is on, on basketball hoops. It seems that there's a lot of respect in materials there, but that's so they may, they may view those as, you know, something that's, that's worth exposing enough on, or recycling. So I'll follow up and check and get a report back on, you know, what their perspective is. That's, again, saying, well, if every, you know, resident has the ability to call and do a pickup, would they be allowed to, to include their old basketball hoops in, in the, you know, in the list of materials that they would be picked up. And I think that's something I know with Recology, I encourage them to do this, to be, you know, marketing to their, to our customers, to their customers, the, the service that they not have, like in lieu of the one day, one day a year.
Well, it would be nice in lieu of the fact now that we have a code enforcement officer coming around that is eventually going to be knocking on doors about basketball hoops. You know, you can hand them a piece of paper that says, you know, if you want to use it, here's how you can use it, you know, you, you put it in your yard. And if you're not going to use it, call this number, they'll come get it, you know.
And I think maybe just it's kind of a starting point. We can, you know, do the Cloverdale newsletter, maybe even a future Cloverdale Connect article on code enforcement. We, we can address, you know, kind of provide a public education campaign around, you know, these items and why folks should, you know, not, not leave them in the public right of way or, or, you know, leave them in there that's inciting, along with other things. So, so I think we can, we can do that as part of our normal outreach with Cloverdale Connect, the newsletter. And then if we can connect that to Recol, you know, and then, and then at, you know, absent something specific in our code, if there, if there are, you know, immediate concerns of, because of their nuisance. You know, we can follow up with code enforcement, you know, it could be a simple, you know, letter from our code enforcement officer. Maybe we, maybe, maybe we have a standard. Well, I know they have a standard template and they kind of plug it in the items, but this could be one we can ask with it. Hey, let's do a survey of the, of the neighborhoods and get kind of a whole letter out to those who are about these. We've heard other concerns similar to what you're expecting. Chair, on these, you know, where people put them, and sometimes they're, they do, they put them in places where they want, they don't want their neighbor to park or things like that.
And, and you know, that's another good issue too, you know, with multi-families living in single-family units. You know, I did a few complaints, you know, maybe one amongst or so that, you know, everybody's parked in front of my house and, you know, you can't find a parking spot because three or four families all live in the dwelling. You know, so if basketball hoop is taking up one of those spots, you know, bringing it up, what?
Max, I think they're just trying to, there's also the safety issue, you know, kids out there, even when they're using them. They're in the street, cars coming up and they're running after the ball. Don't see it, there's cars parked around them. It's just not a good place to be playing ball. Say there's motor vehicles up and down the streets and often times because of the volume of cars parked on the street, you don't see the kids. And, and, you know, again, the last thing with the models is they have somebody to get hurt. So it's really a, it's a growing problem. I think with our parks having more and more ability to go play, you know, shoot hoops and play basketball, that would be a better place to go. Do it safely.
Right. You know, I mean, maybe that marketing message can kind of go together. You know, these are a problem, but here's your solution. Oh, yeah.
It's just nice when you're letting somebody know that they're violating, would pick up ordinance. It's nice to hand them a piece of paper, tell them how to rectify it. So maybe we do.
Yeah, I'm asking, I'm sure this is common problem, is it, in all cities.
All right, well, I see no hands uh, out there anywhere, um, so if there's nothing else, I, I think we've covered all of the uh. New business items. Um. And David, I'm gonna turn the agenda over to you to take care of the standing item, you just bumped down the list here. Um, uh, whoever you want to give us an update on.
Sure, yeah, so what we, so uh. You can follow up on the trash receptacles, I, I know we have the recycle bin uh. You know, the, the trash receptacle, I know there's, it, it would be. The uh, existing model that we have out there.
So, so this, this is the model that we have out there, the last one we utilize for the best, best building. So we don't have that, that specific style. I did go ahead, I did go ahead and call um, waxes supply. And the style that we have in our downtown plaza over a hill.
Okay.
Um, they said they can get something similar, have some close match, but they. Uh, that was not available anymore, we do have. The. Some, a couple of recycle cans uh, receptacle that we can. You know, put in there as a temporary basis.
Blue one in there, temporary, one not temporarily, but. Can we at least put a blue one in?
We, we can certainly put a, just a recycle only, uh, you know, thi- this was in. Something actually we, we, I was discussing. Um, about the uh, idea of. Developing a C I P to replace the existing. Cans, and we, we had a discussion here, if this could be about. Uh, an alternative can that maybe wasn't so friendly to vermin. Um, and I think there's some options. Where uh, we can get a dual can that. Uh, so have both recycling and trash. Uh, in one receptacle, so you're, you're not using. Uh, you know, you're not having two, two receptacles and using more space. Uh, where we can um. Begin a replacement schedule. For some of our existing, where you have kind of whole, with them, with a different design you live that would be. Uh, the maybe. Uh, more resistant to, to vermin intrusion and so. Uh, we, we, we haven't, we haven't fully developed that yet, but that was, that was an idea that we wanted to. Present and whether, you know, that could be like a, a street scape. C I P or so we, we identify all the cans, you know, which ones. Then do we wanna replace, cause they are, they're kind of, they're kind of aging. And uh, they're, they're an older style. Uh, but to give that, a, a, a new kind of updated style that looks decorative, I think, appropriate for our downtown. Uh, where you have the dual kind of. Uh, garbage can inside, so it's recycle in, in trash on one first to. Putting in multiple receptacles and. We, we thought that that might, you know, it comes with costs, they're, they're not, they're not in, inexpensive like that, you know, but. You know, we could probably repurpose some of the existing cans, you can counter it.
One, one thing I mentioned, Derek and I had a little meeting about this right after the last meeting. And one thing that I was mentioning to David is that we, where to go with this route, where we have the dual. Those, those are a lot bigger than what we got now, so they would save up uh, staff time. To change the liners instead of doing two days a week, there's a possibility that we can just change the liners there just once a week. That would save a little bit of money on staff.
Yeah, I didn't realize the, the, the different cans, they're kind of small. And they fill up really quick and so. The, the, the dual cans are, you wanna get one that's big enough, um, but that has both. Both uh, the recycle side and the, and the trash side, uh. It, it requires, you know, a little bit of operational changes just in terms of making sure that trash, there's no trash recycling, things like that, but uh. That might be. That might be an option that. We would wanna pursue considering, oh, I think. Uh, uh, meets the kind of extent of what we wanna see downtown look, to look nice. Somebody who are. They're not bad shape, but they're, they're, they're aging, um, and so we can kind of. We can uh, uh, certainly for purposes, like the capacity issue.
Yeah, if you're not a maintenance point of view, the cabinet just, just install. One of the river park on their side, alternate picture of.
Um, so I, I mean, with, with your support, we can develop a, you know. Yeah, a C I P with a number of cans and, and uh, get a cost estimate to replace it and bring that, bring that back for review. To keep that's uh, supportable.
Could you maybe even consider having options like uh, base in, maybe year one, year two, year three during the most heavily used areas first? And then following up this way, it's not as big of a number and it could be phased in really addressing, so maybe the downtown around the park. Maybe so heavy and you would know after which ones get filled really bad, fast. And so this way, if the number's really big, we can divide that number down over a two or three-year period. Keep it a little more manageable, but hit the, the must-have now, first, second year, third year, and keep it down, so.
We, we, I think that would, would be hard to do, yeah, by critical locations, yeah, I, I know the, the one near plane, for example, very heavily used, that would, that would be. Does not block for recycling, so.
Well, they have them, um, I think they put their own cans out, maybe, yeah, and uh, they're well-used, right, so, yeah.
What I can do, I can, I can contact our vendors, maybe they can even send us some. Uh, different, different auctions, the goal, goal room.
Yeah, then, then who gets to put them down?
I would think, I would not speak of the streets apart, but I think that that's.
Well, I, everybody like this. To get a resident, I mean, I, I know you have all these things to do on your calendar, but. You know, to me, this is something simple, uh, and I know I'm naive, but I approach a catalog and say, okay, this one, you know, over twenty of them. And let's get them in, but um. You know, especially the recycle ones, I know one of the candidates running the city council. Um, wants to see more blue cans up and down the street and um. You know, supposedly there's some sitting in the courtyard and not using. So I. Wha- whatever, wherever I said that, I don't know, but. I mean, the, the public sees that there's no recycling on that, on the.
A- absolutely, we certainly understand here, uh. You know, it, we, we should have recycling, you know, available, so. It's just a matter of updating what we have and. And I, I, I think it's, it's just time to look at this, yeah. It's, it's time to replace some, you know, we. Uh, we kind of want different receptacles anyways, and you know, we can, so we, we reflect that, so. We can, we can move, I think we can move very quickly, pick out a sign and talk about it, bring it back. And, and then, then just be conscious of work, uh, we, you know, we. We have a budget, but.
Well, I know that one over at the basketball, I, I emptied it yesterday and, and. You know, the, I took the bag out and it wasn't even full, but uh, nevertheless, you couldn't get any more in there where the configuration was. And we're small, yeah, and we've taken the. No, the lock was on that one, but I know a lot of them have the lock open, that helps them, so. Anyhow.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, we, we see him, we see like temporary rules for special events, you think, so, yeah, it, it makes sense, but. All right, David, what's next? So the, next item is the paint stop, uh, ahead of I bring them asphalt, uh. This is uh, it, on the north and southbound Cloverdale Avenue approaching North Street. This uh, this intersection is. Where the city uh, just about three years ago now, um, installed a. A stop sign um, on the northern southbound lane, so it's kind of a new. Uh, relatively new for the community, uh, required stop on. And, 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 and it's also an area that uh, has been. Uh, used for uh, for crossing by pedestrians, particularly school kids, um, we. In the past, the city board crossing guard at that location in the school now to put volunteer. Uh, we did receive some, some concerns that from the crossing guard that. Uh, they saw vehicles running the stop sign. So I think it's clear that there needs to be some additional. Uh, uh, improvements both in way of signage and notice to, to uh. Uh, to uh, vehicles to, if there is a stop ahead, um, I, I think it's. Uh, I, I think, come from all your, your, your recommendations, kind of a, you know, a, a paint and stop head on the asphalt. Uh, I, I, I think, you know, in addition to that, it's actually a, a sign that. Is paid, placed in accordance with the, you know, appropriate recommendations um, from that stop sign that's, you know, stop ahead. Uh, we might even look at whether it's feasible to put. Uh, any kind of additional lighting or, or notice on, on those, cause now there's, there's. Some more um, design around the stop ahead signage to, to help again identify if there'd be a stop ahead, so. I, I think, uh, and, and maybe even a mid. Uh. Uh, it. Mid-crosswalk uh, in pavement stop sign there, cause you, you don't always, cause. Inward stop head signs and the, the parking there, sometimes it makes it challenging, I think, for. Or if, if folks are looking down the corridor, uh. They miss those stop signs, um, and so, you know, maybe something. Like, and again, in accordance with the appropriate fa- guidelines, you know, maybe in the pavement, so we'll have to have.
So maybe something as simple as putting a uh, flashing red light, which power there. The light, uh. A, a flashing red light both ways would catch the attention if there's a stop sign. I, I think it's important, it's one of these, I don't wanna make a big deal out of it, it's just a problem that really needs to be addressed before we have an accident. Especially since there's an elementary school right there, so I, I, I've seen it, I've seen people run. And I don't think it's intentional. But go through that because they don't see it and. The, I think the red, if we put the red deep in light, it is a stationary light, it can't be all that expensive to, to have in power. And that would probably take care of it, or in combination with maybe the stop and hit it, but the light itself would. Would definitely catch my attention of the driver.
Definitely means, I think, some additional attention to, to drivers there.
And again, I'm trying to think, at least I don't think it'd be relatively real expensive, but that's going to take care of the safety issue. So.
And, and I, I just wanted to mention that, you know, in, in. In response to the concerns that were received when cops and car, our chief went out. Actually, was out there today with the crossing car, kind of, uh, involving, uh, assessing the, the activity, uh, according to chief, he didn't seem very. Run the, run the stop sign today, but uh. Uh, you know, he, he did. Look at the conditions and he does recommend additional traffic control measures, so. I'll coordinate with, with Vanessa uh, on this and we'll, we'll. We'll, we'll, uh, you know, I, I think we need to, we need to get the, the striping as quickly as we can on, on this, um. And, and look at what, uh, what other measures we can take, including the flashing light. And the advanced, I think the, definitely the advanced uh. A stop ahead is something that's very appropriate. Uh, in, in, in accordance with the, what they call the D T D guidelines, uh, so that kind of. And, and couple that with additional enforcement, I, I did wanna mention that we uh, recently. Uh, acquired a new um. Uh, electronic signing board slash radar system. And uh, the police department is currently working on programming, uh, it, it came pre-programmed, a lot of messaging, but uh. Uh, they're, they're, um, they've assembled it and they're finalizing. Uh, its deployment and this, I shared with the chief that this would be a. Uh, one of the primary areas we wanna target with this new. This new uh, message, electronic messaging board and also uh, radar, so to tell folks just how fast they are, are driving. It won't ticket them, but uh, uh, you know, sometimes that visual uh, feedback to drivers is, it can be, can be effective.
It also helps with identifying if there is a speed problem, what it is. And the hour of day that that's happening, so you can see that helps with your resources. So if it's every day between three and three forty-five. That would be a good time to have an officer out there.
Rather than the whole grid. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm excited to get this deployed, I know the chief's, they've got a, a plan uh, for. Moving it around to some of the key uh, areas where we've. Been receiving feedback from the community about speeding, running stop signs, et cetera, so.
Well, I, I know just to the north of that crossing. Uh, as you come down the hill, um, on the right-hand side, just before you go over the creek. Little bridge there, there's a flashing yellow lights. Uh, but I think they only flash when the school is uh, in session or when they're coming and going. Because it says uh, speed limit twenty-five miles ahead when flashing, so um. There is power there, if, if we decide to take that down, put that red light up there. There like, there'd be regrow there, so.
Yeah, maybe we, uh, we, we recommend that.
I see no uh, hands, so um. Yeah. Vanessa, anything on that?
Okay. Okay, uh, uh, I have a C chair, this is the approximate infrastructure improvement cost, uh, we, we uh. Have. Requested a scope of work from a traffic safety engineer, uh, we, we did review the um. You know, site information, the location. Uh, of the, you know, where, where we. Were interested in, um. Well, to see the site and D, I think, I think I go C. Uh, well, well, lastly, we, we brought forward a uh, a detailed cost estimate for. Uh, pedestrian, pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements. Uh, streetlights, pathway, sidewalks. Um. If for, for all of us, I wasn't sure if this was kind of a more. Uh, the same, the same section or uh, if, 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 if. I think the direction we, we received was to put a narrative to.
Well, a schematic, I wanted it as a schematic, so I wanna get this to the Senator Requires. He, he, he did say that we would do everything again to help find money, working with Caltrans. So the sooner I can get something, but I want something that. That's more than just a big, I want something that kind of shows what the project look like. Cause that's, that's important.
Right, and, and I, I know we're coordinating with. With uh, our interim city engineer on putting that uh, putting that traffic together, is that, is that fair to say, Vanessa, we? You, you remember your team was gonna help with this?
I do, we've, we've got one drafted, I just need to give it a final review before I send it over to you guys. Um, in honestly, in drafting uh, the exhibit. Uh, we were able to dig in a little bit better on some of the existing infrastructure and what would be connecting where. I can probably bring that cost estimate down a little bit, um, I mean, not, not much, but um, I'm. In addition to giving you an exhibit, um, I'd also like to kind of fine-tune that cost estimate. Just a bit.
Now Vanessa, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm correct, but the cost estimate would have. Um, for like the striping of the street or flashing light, it would be broken down, almost like a dialog menu that we could pick?
Not, not to that detail, I've got it uh, really kind of high level, um, you know, w- once you get into kind of striping. Um, there's really some kind of high level. Um. I guess itemized. Work items, uh, but it's really very generic, you know, general storm drain as opposed to this many drop inlets. This many connections and that kind of thing, um, I'd like to keep it really uh, very at a preliminary level, uh, with some really ballpark costs. Um, you know, like for example, the railroad crossing, that's gonna be. A, a hill of beans all by itself, but I don't wanna get more uh, detailed than just calling it a railroad crossing with an estimated dollar amount there.
And I, I know you'll keep your eye open for grants on that type of improvements as well, I'm sure.
Sure.
Um, I don't know what's out there.
Well, Senator Requires office committed to working with us to try to help find money. Uh, safe routes of schools, one area we'll look at and also working with Caltrans as funding. And he gave me a couple of examples of places where he was able to get some funding in place and certainly we can bring smart into the conversation as well. But again, we need something, this is what we're trying to do, this is what we estimate the cost, this is the amount of money we're shooting for. Now, let's, how do we proceed?
We did, we did today just a member of C B B G for, it's a little bit. Out of the area, but it does serve that area on First Street, the, the sidewalk, the missing piece of sidewalk.
Thank you, great.
Yes, I, I, this is a, a work in progress and I think uh, we just. Didn't have it ready to go yet, so we're sure. Didn't have it ready to go yet, so we're sure, we'll 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 uh definitely, I think as soon as. Vanessa has the time to to kind of conduct her final final review, I I can certainly, we can certainly. I'll take a look at it, um and send it over to you for review and then we can maybe certainly.
And as it stands now, there's no uh gates for the shovels to go in the ground? The developer?
No, not yet, they haven't, they have not applied for building yet, I think it's going to be next spring.
So we hopefully we can have some work done before they even come and. Start doing it, but it should be done whether they build there or not, as long as the funding is there. Thank you.
Okay, well, Chair, on the I on the I to be, sorry, I kind of jumped ahead last time, uh we we've requested a scope of work. Uh from a traffic safety engineer to him, you know, prepare a a set of plans to improve the. The the branch for pedestrian improvements. And and really looking at it as an option to the bridge is is a way to ensure pedestrians have a safe way to move from. Cherry Creek Village north to Six and sidewalk, the other piece to this is that we we see correspondence about is actually. The cross, you know, mid block crossing to the west side of the boulevard, so. We'll we'll take a look at that and discuss with the 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 traffic safety engineer feasibility and that kind of. That kind of the block crossing, um you know, kind of what it what it speaks to and where we see a lot of legislation. Or a lot of the guidelines for 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 funding going is, do we have a complete streets plan? And, you know, right now, we say, we, you know, we don't have an adopted plan. Um but this is kind of why we we like to have one of these, because. We want to identify these improvements and these are all things, then we can say, well, one, it's a check the box item, uh but it also. Helps kind of identify some of the things in advance that we want to pursue grant funding for, so we kind of. We do a lot of this on the kind of an ad hoc basis, if we get requests and and that that's okay, um. But it'd be nice would be, uh well, we could be proactive and say, okay, now we want to prioritize part of this improvement. And have a have a, you know, have that be the the improvements reflected in our capital group and programs and. Um just just something, we're 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 kind of, we're implementing projects, um but, you know, having. Uh a a plan to do it uh will will help, what we're going to see. Uh very shortly is a uh result of the uh complete street safety assessment. And the focus of that was on Ossie Road and such as their first street because of the. You know, the that's a very important project, but. The included in that is a a general recommendation that we we prepare a complete streets. Plan for identifying these kinds of improvements and um that you you'll you'll see that embodied in the recommendation. So I hope it's, we'll 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 have that scope, we'll we'll be able to bring that back.
Talk irrigation is that next?
Yeah, so we're still, uh we uh we're watering one one day a week, the old parks and nice skate areas. But we're watering with shorter cycles, roughly about about fifty percent of normal, where we're allowed to water, which is one day a week. Um and uh kind of, you know, we've been turning off. A lot of irrigation that we don't utilize, we were working in the cottages last week. And identified several areas where vegetation had died back that um we just don't get the irrigation there, so. Uh we're still watering, but just a minute long enough to keep the plants, right now, the the days are getting shorter. And it's cooler at night, so it it uh just watered near the plants, so um yeah, we're just doing it a half. Percent right now. The 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 three inches of rain, you see in that last storm, uh that was perfect. Uh we got that and uh it's uh it's a combination of of cooler days and. Right now, this is the perfect environment with the grass. To do so until we get some type of rain, right? So.
And the next one is the um city grant application submitted to the Department of Water Resources.
Uh thank you, Chair, so on on this time, I reported in the last committee that the. Uh the grant agreement has been fully executed and just this week, we had, we uh had a meeting. Uh with uh D W R where they presented the grant. Uh the reporting guidelines, um so we see that presentation, so we're coordinating with Vanessa and her team. Making sure we uh prepare to submit the quarterly reports to the reimbursement on time. Um it it's kind of a first step, we uh likewise. We're planning for, we we've already submitted the next article in the Cloverdale Connect, which is focused on. On homelessness and adoption of the camping ordinance, um but the 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 separate article is going to focus on. Provide the community with an update on the ground, um and particularly the uh AMI meter system. Uh so we want to start getting the word out to the community that the, you know, we want to move. As quickly as we can with uh implementation of the meter project, uh this is an item that you're going to discuss at council. On Wednesday, we are bringing forward the financing plan uh through the P G N E turnkey program. On to, uh you know, the grants paying about fifty percent, so we got the other, the other fifty percent to um. Uh of the cost of the project to to uh fund through, uh you know, through through debt. Uh with, you know, some buydown from both uh ARPA funds and then future reimbursement on D W R. So we're we're kind of building that all in uh to what we're bringing forward to council under the financing plan. Uh once we have that in place, I know they've already uh through our. Our working relationship with P G N E and their sub consultants, uh they've already pre-ordered the meters, so. Uh I think that's good news, we were, we um aren't right now, and we keep asking if they're going to, if we experience any. Uh you know, supply chain issues and the the what we're hearing is that we're in good shape, um in terms of when. Uh we, you know, want to be able to carry out the project, uh so what we we've we've done is is really. You know, we're looking at defining the timelines, preparing out these projects, we we know we have a. Uh a three-year window to deliver and and we're we're fully planning to be able to deliver these projects well in time. Um because we want to make sure we meet our grant requirements and uh of course, but also just want to want to. Want to want to get it done, so uh I I think, you know, this is a good one, we'll we'll keep. We'll we'll keep tracking and, you know, the kind of next step is really the community outreach, please start. Letting the community know that these uh these projects are, you know, it's. Particularly the the meter project, that's where we're going, we're really going to see something different, it's, you know, they're going to have new meters and and a new. Way to access their usage data, um. Maybe a new bill, um ten percent loss in meters, uh so that that's uh. That's that's all in the process, Vanessa, is there anything you wanted to to share with with the committee?
Nope, I think you've got it.
It's exciting.
Uh next time is the complete street striking plan, so we um have a report, we exit, the agreement with every trans is. Executed, I think our next step is uh we want to just do a kickoff meeting to make sure the same information that's needed there. Is uh complete that process on. Uh you know, I know related to this, there was an interest in inspecting, you know, staffing level or what what we can do internally, but maybe not. Um our uh our our maintenance staff. What what's schedule off today, so I'm pretty crazy, I asked him. The doctor, so uh let's see, be here, um. Uh the the, you know, the, I I've had the conversation with with our our staff on this and. What I think we are going to do, and I'll work with Vanessa on, is uh of course, the the striking plan, the big focus is going to be the. The boulevard uh treadway and footpath, but there's a whole lot of neighborhood streets and um. Uh you know, residential connectors that uh the stop bars, the the stop um lettering. Uh is is faded and and or missing and even the crosswalk sections, so that's an area uh where.
The entire crosswalk.
Right.
Yeah, I just, I can give you a list of those locations, there's just a lot of. And more importantly, school crossings, the yellow that are have gone faded, I mean. Really want to be.
Right, and I I I know that some of those um are. Can be done with with thermoplastic and it's just matterless in applying the thermoplastic uh scheduling being that done. Uh our, I did confirm our existing strike, striking unit is is uh uh. Is outdated, is no longer functional, um so. Uh I'm going to see if I can get a quote to replace that for, and and with that, with the strike, the striking that we had was primarily for things like. Uh restricting parking areas, the city parking lots, the cemeteries, the city hall, uh a certain. Straight red or red curved, um so it looks like we need to replace that equipment, um I did confirm that, so. Uh I'll I'll, we're going to work on it, get that replaced, that shouldn't uh uh. Deter us from scheduling to get the 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 stop bars and the lettering done, um I think what we want to do is. Is develop a plan for the high priority areas and and then work through that, identify. The key ones get that done and keep moving, you know, that list of.
You want to shoot him up or? I don't have a list, but I see him. I'm trying to remember, it's like, yes, my, but but it was. But let us know if you can possibly. Well, the thing is, what what I was looking for is to hear from Craig, I know they used to do it. Pretty religious, Streets Department would do at least one, maybe even two intersections in a month. You know, piece maybe in three hours here, four hours there, it was a routine, because it's like the Golden Gate Bridge, you start here. And you got to go back again, and so there's no end to the project, because there's so many. But ours are so bad right now, almost throughout the entire city, so it's going to take a little bit more effort, a lot more resources. And what I wanted to hear from him is basically how they did it, what the plan out were, what equipment did they have? What what do we need to do as a city, because we need to get that back into a cycle and have it happen. And I just wanted to, and Suzie, she may be able to hear me, uh but take a look at the budget under the uh. Roadway maintenance, uh roadway maintenance and rehabilitation, we have over two hundred, almost three hundred thousand dollars in. And that would be a good area, we need, because that's what it is, maintenance of the roads and keeping them up. We may be able to identify a funding that we can move forward, get some good, solid equipment in place and get this thing moving. And uh, you know, like I said, I especially concerned with school crossings, having them very visible and stand out. Uh if you take a look in Hillsburg, they recently uh did overlay of their streets. And totally remarkable, and they stand out nice and right, directs our streets and it is hard to see. So we really need to change that and not just in the short term, but I want to make sure our crews have the equipment they need. To do it, because it makes the job a lot easier, more professional, and again, that's not, I realize we're strong, we're going to go out. Contract is a big job, but we also have the maintenance part, and that's where we have our public street department, and we need to get them. Programmed, make sure we got the equipment they need, get the supplies they need, and let's get the program, they used to do that. And it was done regularly, so they got away from it, and that's what I wanted to hear from Craig is, how did we get away from it? How do we get back into that, so, so I just tried to wear out the sand. But I think we have funding, I think we can get some of the equipment we need, because that's what the money's for, maintenance of our streets and whatever we need. So, okay, thank you. So if we can keep that on there, I'd like to hear what the plan is after you uh get a chance to take a good look at it.
Pickleball court? Yay! Yeah, we're having a grand opening ceremony on on Saturday on both uh. Well, all three of us here at the Gable will be at the at the grand opening ceremony, I don't know. Oh, yeah, I guess, sorry, sorry, you just.
I'm a little aware of the.
It is Brad, Brad or Ralph, right? Uh uh I'll I'll plan a new introduction, coordinate with the mayor, uh he is the, he wants giving those honors to. To uh come from Apollo, we do um, it's all interviews. Will do kind of initial introductions over here and then we can introduce Mr. Crowe for his uh work as the. Our COVID basketball and back there, and we're going to have a a little play event, I think, and then. Might see uh some city staff out there.
Well, you you know, that was such a success, we need to stop looking. And, you know, we had talked about reconfiguring some of the playground equipment there at that park. Um I wonder if we could, you know, kind of push it over the playground, you know, a little more and try and get another one. Um or like Cosmo Apollo said over on uh uh Ridge Ridge's metal farm, I pulled that up on my map here. And there is a big green area.
Um yeah, we we did a meeting with the sales rep for some equipment. For for her parks that want to play Strum Your Pole in twenty-two years' time, we might just replace that or fix it up. But she had some great ideas, we're just waiting to hear her, like at an all cart, um well, one of the ideas was the. The the bag tossing instead of the uh, give her the the horseshoes, yeah. So anyway, this, we're just waiting to see back, we'll bring it to this community when we get a degree.
Now, did she go to all the parks?
No, just for her park.
Just for.
We're picking up any, like.
Well, I'm there, I'm sorry, are there horseshoe? Yes, there are.
Horseshoe pits that.
Yeah, they're all kind of next to the road there. See them everywhere, so they have permanent ones that you just have to bring them around.
Yeah.
Which is, you know, in terms of pickleball, I I uh it's usually, it's definitely a growing sport and and I think the protection guard is going to. You know, increase by another forty, forty plus percent in terms of um number of people playing. And, you know, I I I think there's a real opportunity uh for us to coordinate with the schools and. Since they have, uh what we're seeing is a lot of uh tennis courts are being either modified. Or converted entirely, uh because really in one tennis court, you get two pickleball courts. Um and and so, uh you know, with the the more and more youth are playing it, so maybe there's an opportunity. To coordinate higher at the school on just either either converting or restriking in a way that allows the both tennis and. Pickleball just is a way to help meet.
Well, they're open to that, because that was on our memorandum of standing plan, but.
Right.
They've been having some issues out there, and I'm sure what's going on, so.
And and the courts.
At the school district, so we haven't been able to meet. Sure, so, uh we have a school meeting coming up, maybe we should put that on the agenda, David. Just the M O two update, I'd like to get that done before the end of the calendar year, otherwise I'm. Or challenge somebody else, but uh like to get that done, and we should break out specifically the pickleball courts. Uh because she was open to the restriping, so we can do both.
Right.
Very open to that, and I think we should should do that, because uh. You know, like I say, they have some issues going on, the change of board, there's a recall.
It's just a, you know, low hanging fruit to, you know, do a do a conversion, um and then, you know, we can we can. I wonder if this area, that's a basketball court.
But there's so much room there, not going into the other side, you know, where that big, where the kids play soccer or whatever. But there's so much green area, it easily put two new courts there without even getting close to the.
That wasn't it, so Anderson was what sixty five? The fence was what?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, and how many of the pink?
Uh fifteen eighteen.
Oh, eighteen.
So it was about. Hundred, it was like a hundred and seven, a hundred and eight thousand. I mean, that that is really sort of four courts, really, for.
Not including your your.
Yeah. So I didn't even see the few few dollars there with with. Us managing the project.
No, quite a bit, but obviously you had the irrigation reline. And I'm gonna build that one. I'm surprised it came in. You know, from a hundred. But it does make it low hanging fruit that we can afford to do a couple of these as opposed to a basketball court. Is there any, you know, economy of scales that you're through? Yeah, two.
Well, yeah, but I really suggest, when you look at uh vintage metals, there's a lot, we wanna get rid of some grass. There's a lot of grass in that area and I'm not thinking of the the big area on. Yeah, not Muscat, but Merlot, I guess it's Merlot, but on the Hillsburg side, there's a lot of uh grass. And I think you could easily fit two or three words in that area. Here is nothing else. And it would do a number of things, because then people don't have to go to water, you know, neighborhoods, you just go to the park. His mayor is out there.
Yeah, but the only thing might be, it might slow a little bit.
That's where they. It's it's a zone to vintage metals. But but the what happens is that we end up uh in terms of city expense, I made a general expense for that part. Yeah, reduce water.
Some uh a gentleman came to me and he was asking about pickleball courts and he said that he lives fifteen minutes out. He normally plays in the city of Kaya. So it was like, well, it's like, well, it's our fine here and all the lobby event, so he said, is there a group around here?
That that's their oral. We should have some sort of a.
Well, yeah, but it's like.
Over here.
Yeah, this section here.
Yeah, that's around top of the, right in there, we got a lot of grass. And I mean, just a lot of area that could be much better.
Yeah, and I don't think it's, I at first I thought it was kind of hilly, but. Um I I've been slow, it is, yeah, maybe go first, go to the bottom and.
But you can take a look there.
Okay, well, uh quick update on the on the basketball courts, so on the council agenda for the twenty six is a word of bid. Well, uh we uh the low bidder was Regi Construction, so really great to have a another local contractor. That's we've been on the project, they were actually slightly lower than the uh the engineer estimate for the project, whereas. Some of the other contractors were uh almost twice above, uh or nearly twice above them, so. Uh we're delighted to recommend a council award of interest of Regi and based on preliminary conversation. You know, we we will uh be more than likely be able to get that project. You know, I spoke to Regi, we're looking back on the other day, it seems pretty anxious to do that one. So it's it's a slow season for them and you know, of course. You know, we gotta, we kind of did, hopefully we get rain and uh uh you know, that always kind slows activity down. Um you know, we'll have to pay attention there after if we do get raining. Make sure, right, make sure we pay more B and P's and play a lot, they're taking a lot. Once he starts, I mean, sanctions start.
Yeah.
We have to get work after the meeting on Wednesday and.
And we'll be doing that, all that black asphalt all the way around it. I mean, I know one side of the shit. But the asphalt's getting redone to.
With the with the basketball court, it's mostly the concrete.
Yeah.
So the concrete is.
Well, there's the concrete in the basketball court, that's all. It's it's getting redone. And it's bigger, the trail, I'm working with uh uh Grand Baby right now.
Yeah.
To research the whole entire trip. Uh I think I think he's got all his insurance documentation.
This this uh this portion right here, right?
Yeah, that's the, yeah, that's just, that's gonna go all the way back.
It's bigger than the existing concrete, it's gonna be two full size, close, there's, yeah, so it does. There's no trees up.
No, there is, a couple of trees, um two trees from them. But if you ran the rest of the trail, there's only a couple spots that we need to do, but we answered that. I put it in the budget last year, so I think we're just needing a couple of signatures from him and we need to start doing that too. And a lot of good activity there in the park.
And it would be good too, I I know we did this before, um dumpsters that we have.
Yeah.
They get pushed onto the grass and then in the rainy season, it's a big mud pot fan. You know, I know um a former city engineer like gravel.
Yeah.
And have them sitting on the gravel where all the gravel is gone.
We can use a bit more gravel, well, one thing that we were thinking doing too is we're exploring the possibility of taking it outside the park. I mean, the exterior of the park. Just a. It's a heavy truck, but we can definitely address that. I think that would be worth exploring because those big trucks going through that. Not not a good thing, yeah, finding the location that they don't need to do the part. Possibility, we're gonna be using that for now.
Make sure you give.
Oh, we have. We have an operating budget if we have.
Isn't the, let's see, uh the next project, protocol pre called the space, that that project's complete?
Yeah.
Did we have a ten acre?
Yeah, it looped over, I know, uh Chief Marshall uh was kind enough and nice enough to add to uh. Donate two additional days of work uh this does to help the community and 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 I mean. Just about almost eleven acres. So um the they're at, they're they're completed with the project, the next phase is to. Uh wait for a little rain, uh so we can hopefully perform the prescribed burn. Uh right now, if you were to walk up at the open space for a free, you'll see like. Polls are the gray, shaped by the TV, they're four foot by four foot. Um and the finance yet to get person to moisture, we need some little rain so we can uh schedule a day. Uh for a prescribed burn, I could send an email this morning to Chief Marshall, David, Kevin. Uh I just provided them with the um uh burn permit that I. Pulled out last week, uh so right now at this point, we're just waiting uh for a little rain and then. One thing I mentioned to Chief Marshall was that uh if you could please give us a a couple of weeks of notification. So we can go out and let the community know, uh you know, just because they know the smoke and then people get concerned and.
Yeah.
Call us and so maybe maybe do a next little alert with the public chief and then just go through social media. Newsletter and talk to Nina, they can advertise the day when we schedule burn. So it it really, you guys, it really looks nice. Andrew May also, the word manager. Yes, yes. Yeah, and have them pick up a newsletter, I don't know how fast that works, as the weekly or monthly, I'm not sure. But yeah, we did get a blurb in there. Yeah, we we send them uh right before we started there, about a week prior, four weeks prior, we send them, we send them a flyer. And she uh she sent it to good residents.
Actually posted Kelly Rain. Yeah, she posted at the at the clubhouse. He emailed it out to the to the.
And right at uh both entrances of the park to we we advertise, we had signage. Be aware of what's going on on the park. Good stuff there and then we're hopefully next week or following week install that new sign.
Between the three phases. Well, how many acres have we done in total?
Uh it's roughly about thirty thirty three, thirty two.
Almost eleven each.
Yeah.
Pretty significant.
It is, yeah.
The picture is the weekly newsletter, you can see the before and after, it's really.
It's like a whole different park. Because I was saying some more after pictures, I want you guys to see the difference. Because it's a lot of the whole.
How many use of accumulation was that? Forever, I mean, has it ever been claimed or?
Hopefully, uh the time for next year, we can get the uh student, another really good area that's the chief marshal and I.
Uh I have Kay, Jared, let's come right, no 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 real updates, uh. We we did receive the letter that was on the on the planning and sustainability committee. Uh it came as a letter. A draft letter of support for what's called the Alexander Valley property owners. Uh in the group that is working on establishing kind of a a group to represent water users in the Alexander Valley. That they want to coalesce around um addressing impacts related to the Potter Valley project, it's a. It's a group that's I think trying to form to uh the view of non-government interest of private property owners. To to try to have a voice in conversation around. Uh the impacts of the Potter Valley project on their water usage and so uh the direction was to. Uh we see the letter, but we don't know who 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 the representatives are and what is the geographic scope of this. This this in this this group that wants to form kind of a district. Uh private privately driven, um and what they're asking for is. Uh a letter of support. Uh we'll we'll we'll, once we get more information, we'll bring that forward to that. That's kind of separated, doesn't affect us directly, though we may have mutual interest with them, I I don't know at this point. Uh in terms of just ensuring that there's that. I I think the goal is to ensure that the interests of the Alexander Valley, uh including. The city or and 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 of course the counties, uh water agencies, the big. Uh the uh voice table is. That, you know, our concerns and issues as 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 policy solutions we've developed are are taken into account. There's it's 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 just been a flow on what properties continue to attract.
All right, airport capital and Cooper?
No, no, no real updates there, um our uh our next project, which is maybe for. A twenty three, twenty four is the dream, the dream project, so. Uh at at this point, we we don't have anything currently that we're.
And six acres, did I see that and that's planning in sustainability?
Yeah, it's it's been it's been standing, I mean, there, um and and so it it was a. An update, I should have included the same update here, uh. The we we then either Kevin or or myself or both of us attend monthly meetings for status updates, the uh. There was a kickoff meeting last Friday, so the uh they finally, the state finally. Executed the the various agreements with. The uh or who will be the project manager to oversee the engineering firm that's working on the. Plan improvement, um that that the engineering work has been ongoing, so the the person appointed is the. Project manager will be the liaison between the state and the city is the um. An engineer, her name is Marlene um uh Marlene Demery. Uh she she has worked for cities in the past, is a civil engineer. Uh and she's gonna be leading up the uh process of working with the. The the engineering firm that the state is paying for to do the improvement plans and what the focus is right now is. Doing the civil improvement plans for connection of the water system. Uh Darren and Trevor attended the meeting last, it's uh Friday morning on. Uh I would have, I would have attended, but I I thought I thought I might have other obligations, so I uh. I did not attend, but it was really beneficial for uh our water team to attend because they get really good feedback on. The civil plans that are being being developed and and uh you know, make sure that our interests are are taken into account. As they're developing those plans, uh and and I think from what I understand, the feedback that Darren. Provided was really positive, really beneficial, that will help. That feedback getting in during the process is better than waiting until the plans are done and then giving it so it's an ongoing iterative process. Making sure that our interests are reflected in the in the plans that are developed. I think it was good, uh and ultimately we'll we'll be bringing that forward once it's in a more final form. Uh it's just all, it's all in progress and state keeps executing agreements with different entities, we do different pieces of this. Uh yeah, remaining other pieces include the, we got to do the sequel environmental. Uh actually for preparation of the application for latte or annotation. Um and um again, the civil plan, so those are all kind of in process. Concurrently, and maybe we should, we should, what's here is this uh that it's. Not just six acres, it's also uh South Cloverdale, we feel our company.
I'll find them. Well, they want to add man break.
Yeah, they want to add the the whole area, um and it it's it's a lot more challenging. Um because with a larger area and and. It the other issue besides being a larger area, um the. There are, there is existing. Uh development that's actually in the city that, but they're they're in the um, they're in the South Cloverdale Water District. So even when you go down the Cloverdale, all our parts of. Uh they're moving, I think Shady Lane, I think the the church, the church. They're they're in the city, but technically within our boundaries, but they're they're served water from the water district, so. It it's a little more complicated because there'll be detaching from the water district. And they all have to get team services, so it's it's not all just, it's it's a. It's a annotation and detachment process of new property plus. Existing property in the city, but that would be the serve, be become become custom of our water system. Um so that that that's something we need to add to the agenda and and give updates on. They wanted to move these forward together and uh. Uh council has already given a policy direction on six acres and and we not resulted in a pre-annotation agreement. Uh our suggestion was that we need to bring South Cloverdale to council for a policy discussion and and make sure. That the council supports, well, we we've had the issues, which we've been trying to do, um and uh. Bring that, you know, package that and bring to council, um the the recommendation so far is really. Follow the model that six acres set with. Get rely on state funding to provide the um engineering and and. For the funding for engineering and improvements to support transition to the water system. And and ways, so it's a dual. Dual funding under under Prop one A, so we're um. You know, that's our message and and that, you know, they what they kind of, they they're kind of growing independent, so. We kind of want to say, well, it it's still gonna be touched with the council.
So wh- what's, do we know what kind of price tag it's gonna be for the city that? What's coming out of our market to accept these people into our district?
Well, a- as as of right now. The, there's no direct out-of-pocket costs, um other than. Our time and staff participating in the meetings, um and our, you know, our feedback or expertise. Uh you know, when we formally get plans, what we that we wanna send to Vanessa and. Um uh our development review engineer, you know, those are gonna be out of pocket costs.
And and what what do we get in return for it? Do we get to hook up these?
We will get hooked up these, yes.
And hopefully that will offset most of it.
Well, um. Well, um, and that, that's, that's, that's something we have to, to look at more carefully is. You know, there is the connection being understood by, by council.
Yeah.
Um. You know, we, we, we don't have another mechanism to, to charge and then anything beyond what the adopted fee is right, right now, but, uh. Uh, you know, they say our time is reimbursable, um. But it's unclear, I mean, we've asked them exactly how that will work. Since everything that's being allocated is directly through the state. It's not, there, there's no pool of money there, it's a city grid person, uh, so. Uh, it, it really are, what we're, what we'll, what we'll receive is the connection fee and then ultimately there'll be. It would be the city, it's in the air, the, the, uh, uh, sanitation is approved and they'd be subject to all city taxes.
Just to follow up on the thought. Could the city require retainer? So we, as we build, we draw gets retainers and not wait to get reimbursed. I mean, because it's kind of like we're doing this. Kind of being forced to do it, whether we want to do it or not, it's kind of, but I don't, I don't kind of think about it. Should we be putting money in? I mean, the money should be here, so use them, you know, and then we spent a thousand in staff tire. Now the retainer went down a thousand.
Right.
We, we just don't have that kind of money to be.
Right, right, and that, and that's, the, the question we ask is consistent with how we ask private developers to, sure, we call it developer deposit. To retain her, uh, but, uh. Uh, you know, it, it's getting funded through the state and the state is, uh, quite such a two our same requirements, so we'll, we'll ask that question.
Yeah, but again, is it, can they, uh, what I'm not clear, can they require us to do this? But not front the money to make it happen, I mean, it seems like, it's one of you, yeah, because it requires us to do it. You give us the money so we can move it along, it's never really.
Yeah, no, that's a great question, um, but they haven't really asked, they haven't, we, we've asked and it hasn't been clear on. How we get reimbursed for our staff time, they keep saying, well, after the project is done, but there's no funding. Because everything that the state allocates in specific dollar amount tied to a specific cap, I don't see anywhere that says, here's the city. Staff time cost, um, I see the fee in terms of, okay, you know, twenty-one minutes times, uh, the, you know, that they're factoring that in. But, uh.
I, I, I just wonder if, um, um, if, if we can't get that established on six acres. Maybe we take that to the table before we approve the South Covedale Water District. Is we want a, um, retainer on deposit to cover staff time. You know, and, and just push them, they've got it there. Maureen has also contacted me to rent the vet's hall in the date that they've selected in January, the tenth, the people presentation. So, um, you know, I guess they still have a few more months worth of work on that. Uh, you know, six acres is gonna be a completely different animal, just based on the. Terrain up there and, and how things are gonna flow and, you know, that could be, uh, uh, a hornet's nest. We get into that too deep without uneven being advised, they.
Never really been a great deal for the city.
No, it's, yeah, it's.
And I guess, you know, bottom line, if, if the city just takes their heels and says, no, we're not taking it. End of conversation, what, what are they gonna do?
We definitely went down that road a little bit with the six acres and I can't remember the term, there was like a forced annexation that the state or. Can't remember who does that, but that is at the end of the road, that's what.
And that goes through what, the court system?
I, well, it's the state, the, the authority of the state water board, it, the, the.
But if it's a money issue, in other words, if the city down your heels and not say we won't take it, it's the cost.
Right.
You pay the money and we'll take it, it's not, but we're not, you know, th- this is it, I mean, they said, no, you take them, you meet the cost, city, I mean. I don't think that would be, that's where it gets a little money, they do it because they can.
Right.
But my question, I guess, now would be, from the legal standpoint, we're fighting it, based on they're not paying the cost. It's worse than to go to our rate, then is that legal, is that really appropriate? You know, I mean, I get the fact they were required, they should have to pay it, whether it's out of state or the rate. The people that live in those areas or somebody.
Maybe we'll look into that reimbursement and ask them more questions about that, start there.
Yeah.
I'm sure right behind South, uh, Covedale, uh, Water District is gonna be Rain's Water District. You know, and it keeps going and going.
There's gotta be some case law of this, I mean, I know we're not the only city that's been forced to do this. And there's gotta be, I'm sure, some. Information out there that's been, I mean, yeah, I don't think cities, from my perspective, is trying to play hard. But you gotta pay the cost like anybody else, so it's, that's, I think, what we need to, to really be clear on.
No, I, I agree with you, Joe, and, um, you know, they have their habit of mandates unfunded and, and is a perfect example.
Yeah.
When, when this whole six acres started, the county was looking at consolidated, consolidating over four hundred independent water districts. In Sonoma County and, um, uh, they finally just dropped the whole issue because they didn't have the funding to pay. So, I mean, it's, it's an expense and, and, you know, why should our rate pay something for it in the back?
And there is, in the state constitution, a mandate that the state has to fund mandates against. Or local jurisdiction, we moved on, and unfunded mandates, some constitutional, literally. Though they don't see this as being a funding issue, they just, but, but we can show it isn't a funding issue. I mean, we're not trying to take the state on by any means, but we want to.
Okay, uh, this will stay on the agenda, I'm sure. Rule twenty-eight, nothing new on that?
No, no, no new reports on, in, in, uh, N O R P.
Okay. N O R P? Okay, so then I guess we're down to, uh, informational reports. Uh, future agenda items. Go to the order. Well, I, I'm not sure if this topic belongs on this subcommittee or not, but, um. I understand that the city came into quite a bit of money in, uh, developer fees on Bone Garter. Um, three million was it? I'd like to see how we're gonna spend that, because I have some ideas.
Yeah, well, let's make sure, uh, it, the, the, the check cash isn't make way through our, our, our deposit, I know we, uh. It, it just came in, but we did receive, uh, just, just a little over three million dollars, uh, in impact fee. Uh, the, we, we do have the breakdown and, uh, we, we can, we can report. Maybe, Si- Sydney, why, why don't we do this? I know you did a screenshot for, for me, um, let, let's, uh. Let, let's plan to, we'll discuss how we, uh, share that with council.
Yeah.
We'll give, give them an update.
Yeah, because I, I know.
Show the fund breakdown.
I'd like to see us drop that new well down there, I think that's a couple hundred thousand. But I don't know what's allocated to water and what's allocated to, to the rest of the, uh, uh, funds.
The park, we, we, we kind of drained the park with the basketball restroom and the pickleball, so we can't replace that.
Yeah, but. But, and, and then there's other things, you know, the well and, and the chlorine tank and, uh, that, that needs work on it. And rid a tank that's, was built in the sixties, I mean, if, we can start. Working on those projects, that would be great, because this is kind of like, uh, a windfall, I guess.
Well, it's just normal course of development, I mean, every time you hear, we just haven't had any large development.
I know, that's what I'm doing, so, it's like a windfall, it's, I mean, you have to use our.
So, so the ponds.
Couple minutes. It's just that there's so much maintenance that's been put on hold for so long. We really need to take as we get some revenue sources to start really prioritizing and start fixing some of these things.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, it quite works. But like I said, I, I, I'm not sure whether, I know it's a, it's a council decision, but I don't know who makes the suggestion to the council. This, uh, police and, uh, finance and.
Yeah, well, I, I mean. We really should look to at the starting point, our capital proofing program, the, the C I P with what? The, the, you know, many of those projects will be funded through, through development activities, uh, and then the council. In light of its money, it says, well, you know, we wanna amend the C I P, then that's what we do, we're gonna amend it. And then it reflects that's what projects we want to carry out or update.
And, and if we, I don't know how much is allocated to parks and wrecks, but I'd really like to see us really seriously look. For a location for skate park and make that happen, that's been on the horizon for, you know, twelve, fourteen years. There is a need for, uh, the dog park we're looking at today, but we're, it's more smart, so, I mean. We're making some progress on things that have been lacking, but there's a big desire in the community. And it would be nice if we could make those things happen and they're one-time expensive, I'm, that we're only gonna have. One dog park, we're only gonna have one skate park and, and then it's done. But those aren't gonna go away, the people out there are screaming for them.
Well, I know Kevin and I had the opportunity to walk the, uh, three acres over our nasty. Um, with the, um, um, sort of maybe moving the dog park over there. And I was pretty impressed with that possible, that, that's a nice piece of.
I think that's where the, the skate park should go.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, I hope so, dog.
No, we didn't look at it, for the dog park, but, but now I'm wondering if the skate park.
Yeah, we talked about that a few years ago and, and being a former dump site, you really can't build on. At least that's what we were told, because we looked at it for a police department and they said because of the past years, it would be almost impossible. But I think we could definitely use it for a park setting, that would be a good spot or a good range to have our. Shuttle bus have a stop there, so kids that choose to go there, that don't have transportation, they get on the first shuttle, they'll all get off. Skate, for the heart's content, there's no residents around, so they're screaming and yelling, having a good time, something disturbing, buddy. Just a good spot, I think, and it's really, uh, the, the land really is not usable for really too much else, so. Putting the park in would be a good use.
And we own it.
Yeah. And, and of course, the, the security issue, maybe a camera, you know, so the dispatches can keep an eye on what's going on there and. Those, I have the crews just one by once in a while. Anyway, that's good news, okay. Um, if there's nothing, uh, for the good of the order, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting. So why don't we go ahead and adjourn the meeting and, uh, staff, Vanessa, thank you, uh, for coming. Hector, as always, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned, Michael, thank you.